Sitting in alphabetical order are Mr. Greg Anderson, Mr. Richard Crispin, Ms. Allison Kuchma, Ms. Shannon Litten, Ms. Shawna Russell, and Mr. Lawrence Webb. Our moderators for the forum are Senior Estelle Tamar Rokos and Coltria Adams. Students and teachers, please note that it is likely his presentation will go into fourth block, so please keep that into mind. I will be in the front. I will be keeping time for the candidates and I'll be waving when you have 15 seconds left to speak. Each candidate is given two minutes to respond to a question. Lastly, we will begin with an intro for each candidate to just introduce themselves and talk about their mission.
We'll start with candidate introductions in alphabetical order, so if you want to go through and give a two-minute introduction.
Hi, everybody, and I'm Greg Anderson. I'm running for school board along with my patrons up here at the table. I want to say thanks to the Lasso team for inviting us to come talk with you all, and thanks to all of you for coming. This is quite a turnout. I have to say this is by far the biggest forum turnout we've had, by at least a factor of three or four, today. I will just say, I'm running for school board because I have the technical expertise that the school board needs, the background with the schools, and a commitment to serving our city as a whole. I've been a project manager and a scientist for about 15 years. I deal with large projects all the time, and the schools are a complicated, large project, and large project, and large practice that need to be involved, and I do that all the time. I've been a volunteer in the schools since we moved here in '09 in lots of different ways. In the last few years, a lot of time spent on technology use in the schools, working with other parents, working with the administration, and teachers, and students, and staff to try to make that more effective. And I'm a public servant in my day job. So you put all of that together, and for me, running for school board is the next thing to try, the logical step of an evolution of increasing engagement with the schools. There's a lot of issues that are important out there in the city, and some things that are important to me and to folks that I've talked to, include building a high school that will fit our city and our students and our teachers, ensuring that our schools are sustainable for the long haul in lots of different ways, recruiting and retaining excellent teachers, and making sure that we have the staff and the teachers that we need, using technology in the classroom wisely, and we can talk a lot about that, but I'll just say we only have two minutes, making sure that we provide educational opportunity for all students. And then finally, serving the community and leading with transparency and integrity in everything we do. So, that's why I'm running.
Good morning. I'm gonna try that again. Good morning. Thank you, that's better. Ladies and gentlemen, the purpose of free public education in the United States of America is to ensure a free and informed electorate and to prepare a workforce that can compete and win in the 21st century. In the city of Falls Church, we need excellent schools that can be a beacon and a model to our Commonwealth and to our country. This building is neither a beacon nor a model. It may have had a storied and glorious past, but it is time to give it a wonderful retirement and replace it with a structure that can be the thing that will prepare our children and our students for the years to come. And as we embark on those decisions, we need clear and effective governance and oversight. I've had the privilege of serving on multiple world-class boards of companies and nonprofits around the country, and I want to bring the insights and lessons that I've learned from serving on those boards to this board to make sure that we can have measurable impact, that a dollar that we spend results in a dollar's worth of educational improvement, and that we create schools here in our city that can be a home and a center for community life for everyone in the city of Falls Church, regardless of whether you have children in schools or not. And that, my friends, is why I am running for school board and why I am so happy to be here with all of you and why, again, I add my thanks to Greg's thanks to the Lasso for hosting us. I look forward to a great conversation with all of you. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Allison Kuchma. I've lived in this community for 15 years. My husband Dave and I have raised our children here. And all three of my kids went through the system and graduated from George Mason High School in 2010, 2013, and 2015. I spent a lot of time on this stage, the JV Show, Les Mis, and Brigadoon, I guess that's probably before your time. But we have great schools here. And in my time as a parent, I built relationships with staff and educators, and I really learned about their passion for what we do here. And I feel like my greatest responsibility, if I were to serve on the board, and I think even as a community, our greatest responsibility is to secure the resources for what we do here. We do some really exciting stuff. Obviously, the IB program is the bedrock of what we do. We also have a lot of students that go to the Arlington Career Center, which is really exciting. Students explore robotics, and theater, and music composition. And there's so much that goes on here. For a small district, we're really awesome. But I feel like the greatest threat to that is the lack of resources. So I feel like my primary responsibility would be to work with Superintendent Noonan and any of these other candidates to create safe resources for us moving forward. Because the most important thing that we do here every day happens in the classroom, and in order to support our teachers and students, we need resources. And I'm really passionate about it. I've been meeting with superintendents and Mr. Hills on a myriad of issues because it's something that's really important to me. And so that's why I'm running for school board. And I say to all of you, I really encourage you to, as you leave this building, to also pursue your passions. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Shannon Litten. It's great to be here, it's great to see so many of you here. I know you're at the end of your quarter, and I know my son told me he would not be here because he was doing an English project, but I don't know if your teachers made you come, but I'm glad so many of you guys are here. As far as my priorities for the school, I think there are two things that are really important. First of all, we need to deal with the George Mason School infrastructure situation. So it looks like, you know, we may potentially be getting a new school. We'll see if that passes. But that's a priority for me. I think we're gonna, it's gonna be challenging for you guys in the next couple of years as that process begins. So we're gonna have to find a way to manage that in a way that works for all of you. Second of all, I think our teachers are our greatest priority. We need to ensure we keep the best teachers here. I think you guys all know how important great teachers are. So I think those are the two biggest priorities we have right now, and I thank you guys for being here, and I look forward to our discussion. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Shawna Russell. My name is Shawna Russell, and I'd like to thank the Lasso and for George Mason for having us here because I think it's a really special event, and I'm glad to see so many faces here. And like Greg was saying, and Richard was saying, this is definitely our largest audience yet. I just wanted to first touch on my three priorities, and that's first-class facilities, which we'll talk about probably in a number of other contexts tonight. Small class sizes is very important to me, and attracting and retaining the excellent teachers. And I've been a member of our community for about 10 years, and when my children were younger, they attended a cooperative preschool. And I think several of you in this room probably also remember way, way back in the day when you went to preschool that you also went to a cooperative preschool. So you know that the parents work in the classroom, there's a board, everybody's members. And so when my daughter was starting at Matt Daniel a decade ago in Mrs. Nelson's classroom, the kindergarten parents were asked to help in the classroom and with other projects. And I quickly volunteered because that is what you do when you are a member of something. You help out. That led to chairing PTA committees, being president of the Elementary PTA and on the Executive Board of the MBH PTA. And for those of you who are freshmen, you may remember the Hippo-Tiger Games, which are still going on. I actually created that. So now it's still going, it's a big tradition out here that this year has gotten so large, they're actually moving to the Mason Field. So that's very exciting. Outside of my activities with the PTA, I've attended and committed to a number of budget work sessions and meetings, and have been engaged and committed to our schools for the past 10 years. And most recently, I've been helping out the Falls Church Education Foundation. Over the past decade, I've developed strong collaborative relationships with our teacher and parent populations and other community leaders. I can attest to how critical it is that we all work together to continue to provide a world-class public education to all our children.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lawrence Webb. I am the current chairman of the school board and running for reelection to the board. It has been, my first name is the Lasso, and thank you all for coming out this morning to hear a little bit about what we plan to work with you and how we look to continue and better the education for the students here in the city of Falls Church. In my day job, I am, I work in higher education as an admissions officer. So for seniors, I understand the stress that you all are going through right now. I'm out and about all over the, all over the country recruiting students for current universities. I work at police state university in Maryland, and I've worked at the University of Mary Washington in Fredericksburg, and Shannondale University in Winchester, Virginia. And that's one of the pieces I like to share with the board and with the system, is my knowledge of what we provide here in the city of Falls Church of the education and how you all compare and compete with students all over the country. And I'm here to tell you from my background working in higher education, you are some of the best and brightest students that we have here. One of my priorities is to make sure, and over the last three years I've been a part of that conversation, is that we replace George Mason High School. I spend a ton of time here, as well as the other schools in the system, and this is, one of the top priorities that we need to do is get a new facility for the students here at George Mason. It is, teachers are great here, and teachers are our number-one resource. But for both our students and our teachers, we need world-class facilities to provide the world-class education that you all currently are receiving. Second priority is to make sure that we, as a system, continue to build upon the, our first in Virginia IB program gives you all the opportunity and privilege to be able to receive college credit. I look forward to answering questions that you all have today. It is, again, a pleasure to be here with you all. The reason that we all are running to be a part of this to be important and make this a better system for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We'll now begin with round one. We're going to draw names of candidates from a hat and randomly assign each of our prepared questions to a candidate, and you will have two minutes to respond to the question.
All right, so our first question is for Ms. Litten. What do you see as the greatest academic need facing George Mason High School in the future?
I actually think George Mason does a great job with really addressing your academic needs. I think the challenge, at least from what I've heard talking to people in the community, is, for example, people who want to participate in the Arlington Career Center, that there's not enough spots. So, you know, I think maybe for people who want more of that hands-on learning, maybe we are not doing enough or having enough opportunities. So I think we need to look for some ways to increase opportunities in that area.
All right, our next question is for Mr. Anderson. What is your position on the upcoming bond referendum?
So I'll say straight up that I plan to vote for the referendum because it will allow us to replace our current high school with either a new or renovated high school. And we need to do it, clearly. The high school is, doesn't have the capacity for the student population that we expect it has in the next five years and beyond. And it's got systems that are at the end of their useful lifespan. There's an analogy floating out there right now that it's a beloved car, but every now and then you need to go and buy a new car. I'm not sure that that analogy holds, but it's an interesting analogy. I think we, we need to replace our school. Passing the bond referendum allows us to then do 14 months of very hard work. I think this is really important for everybody to understand. It isn't a blank check. It doesn't say we're going to spend $120 million, and we certainly don't start issuing that much money at the front. It starts 14 months of very hard work to figure out what the final school should look like. You will all have a voice in that. The board will have a voice in that. The community will have the opportunity to comment. That takes time, but that's what happens. On the land side, the city is going to be working on the land use agreement. It's going to be reaching an agreement with developers through a, a long process of requests for quotes and requests for proposals, and a process to determine what happens there. So this is one of these things that's really important for us to understand. It's not a straightforward process, but it is a process with gateways that we pass through that let us make wise decisions that get us to the right school for the city in the end. So we have to pass this bond referendum to get that right school for the city in the end. That's why I'm working for it.
Our next question is for Ms. Kuchma. So what ideas for innovation and improvement would you bring to the table as a school board member?
I'm really glad you asked that question. It gets back to my priority of making sure that we have the proper resources for everything we do here. So one of the first things I'd like to do, in addition to supporting, working towards building a new school and solving our facilities issues, is to have the board create subcommittees. I think the board needs to have a subcommittee on budget and finance that will enable the board to really monitor our spending. I think we need a subcommittee on constructions and facilities so we can really oversee the construction of the new school and monitor on a regular basis the maintenance of our buildings. I also think we need a subcommittee on innovations in education because one of the things that we need to do is always be proactive and forward-looking about how we meet the changing needs of our students. There's a lot of coursework. I think there was 375 students that took coursework online. I think we need to be thinking and always getting ahead of what we do here. I think, getting back to the IB program, is the bedrock of what we do here. So it's really, really important to this community that we maintain this. So we need to think creatively outside the box of how to make sure that we really defend something so important to us. And one of the ideas that I have is perhaps partnering with Marshall High School. I know that's not something we do, but if we have classes that have small enrollment, I would prefer to have students have access to a teacher and not doing a course online. So maybe if we partner with another high school that does IB, we can offer classes that maybe we've had to cancel because of small enrollment. So I'm just open to all kinds of ideas to make us better.
Our next question is for Mr. Webb. As a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input and weigh key decisions?
Apparently, when I look at and make decisions as a school board member, there are a couple folks that I go to, it's both talking with, typically with the teachers and the administration first because they are the, on the ground, working with our students and knowing what the needs and priorities are for those students. It's then working with our central office staff as they prepare and put together the information that's going to be presented to the school board to move forward with that. But then also, I want to make sure I hear from the community, and then I always have, like hearing from students when they have a potential issue within the schools. Because, again, it's your schools. We'd like to hear from you all. We don't hear from you enough. We, I love the fact that we have a representative from the schools that serves on the board with us. So we do get a little bit of insight from there. But we also like to hear directly from you when you all have questions. So it's being open to hearing different ideas, whether they are my ideas or coming from others. It's all about making sure that we have the right prescription of making sure that our schools continue to grow and be successful.
Our next question is for Mr. Crispin. So please discuss the importance of the IB continuum as an educational model for Falls Church.
You know, in science, the gold standard is to have a double-blind study where you can separate two groups. You can see one in the control and one in, under the experiment. In the social sciences, including education, we don't often have that opportunity because nobody likes to be in either the control group or the experimental group. But I've had the advantage of a bit of a natural experiment in that when we first moved to this area, we were right on the outside of Falls Church, and one of my kids started K through 4 in a non-IB program. And now I've got a younger son who's K through 4 in the IB program. So I've gotten to see the two things kind of compared side by side. And what I've derived from that is two things. One, that there's an innate value to the program to the individual student. And then there's also a systemic or extrinsic value to the whole system. What I've observed in my own children is that it communicates a learning style, a thinking style, that I don't think you get outside the IB program. So I'm completely in support of the IB program for that, for the ability to communicate that kind of thinking style and that inquisitive mindset that I've seen develop in all of my children now, but particularly in the two that have kind of grown up more in the system. Extrinsic layer for the whole system. I think the other thing that the IB program does, and that Dr. Noonan has done such a great job at saying, "We're gonna be the best," is it sets a north star, it sets a direction that the entire system can then organize around. And that's one of the things that I've learned from my time in corporations, as well as in other international nonprofits, is that you really need that. You need that kind of a north star that says, "Okay, we're all gonna go in that direction." And then we can align resources and align priorities around that direction. So I also do, at the same time, think we need greater flexibility for students who perhaps aren't on the IB degree program, but the program as a whole, I think, is excellent.
Okay, our final question is for Ms. Russell. What would you like to accomplish during your first 100 days on the school board? Is there anything you'd urgently like to accomplish or correct?
So just for those who aren't aware, the term of the school board actually doesn't start until January. So first and foremost, in the two months after being elected, when I'm not officially on the school board, I continue to meet with community leaders, administrators, students. Basically, what I've been doing for the past five months, I can't even tell you how many people I've met with, because I really want to make sure that I'm getting the community input. After I'm elected, I would continue those meetings. But for the reality of it is, in January, once the term starts, the key thing gonna be focusing on the budget. So I've sat through several of the budget cycles, and I'm very familiar with it. But every year, it's a grueling process where there's a lot of negotiation. And so I will be fighting very hard to make sure that George Mason High School and the other schools in our district get the resources that they need, that the teachers get the pay that they deserve, and everything else that we want in a critical budget. Like, the final thing I may be doing is addressing the results of the referendum. And by results of the referendum, win or lose, I will make sure that there is something in place that we are addressing the needs of George Mason High School. Hopefully, it will be moving toward getting a new facility. But even if it isn't, making sure that we are going to make this the world-class facility or as best we can that it can be. So I think that there's gonna be a lot on our plates, whoever's on the school board, starting in January. And with regard to the referendum, if there is a new school, first and foremost, I would also immediately start getting groups together to talk about what that looks like, making sure that we have the right people involved so we can put together the best high school possible.
So we will now allow candidates two minutes to respond to each other or answer questions they did not get the opportunity to in the first place, starting with Ms. Litten.
I don't think I have any responses to my colleagues here, but the one question I think is maybe the most interesting to think about on your list is ideas for innovation and improvement. In my day job, I'm kind of lucky in that I get to see what's going on in sort of the education world across states and really across several countries. And I would say there's a lot of really interesting things going on out there that I think these districts should take a look at. For example, there are some places where students are actually spending less time in the classroom, maybe doing some of their lectures online, but then coming to school to work in groups with other students and get help from teachers. There are some places where maybe they're using museums or zoos or, you know, some of the things out there in our community as classrooms part-time so that students are getting a lot more hands-on experience. So I think in, if I were on the school board, it might be worth putting a committee together to begin to look at, like, what are some things in the next 10 to 15 years we could do that are sort of creative ways to do education that gets you out of just being in the classroom, but connects you more to some real-world things.
So, Mr. Crispin?
For me, great. So I will actually address two of them, both on innovation and improvement, as well as accomplishments in the first 100 days. You know, I think one of the things we will have come through at the end of this election is a bit of a bruising campaign on the referendum. And there's a fairly significant, we'll see how, exactly what proportion, but some allow a group of individuals who don't feel heard in this current referendum. And we will need to work to rebuild our trust with those, with that group. You may have heard a lot of calls for transparency. Before I did what I do now, I ran an organization that rated the 1,000 largest companies in America on their transparency. And I can tell you that when transparency is raised, transparency is not the issue. The issue is trust. And there is a group of folks who have lost trust and lost faith in our institutions and our leaders. So I would go right out to that to figure out how we can better rebuild our trust. And I think part of how we do that is in restructuring how we meet. Margaret Mead is often quoted as saying that, "Never underestimate the power of few dedicated citizens to change the world. After all, nothing else has." How do you think they did that? They didn't do it in email, they didn't do it sitting in a room by themselves. They do it in meetings. And in particular, in meetings is how we improve our governance and our government. And I actually support some of the ideas that Allison proposed a moment ago about reorganizing our committee structure and looking about how we can have more effective discussions within the government, within the school board, within, between the school board and the city council, but also between us and the public. This is kind of an unnatural interaction that we're having right now. You down there, us up here. We have our, we have microphones, you do not. Dr. Noonan and I thought did a really great job of having more roundtable discussions earlier in the year on strategic planning. And I think we need to do a lot more of that to get better and more effective input from the community. Thanks.
Ms. Kuchma?
Yeah, I think I should take the position, discussing my position on the bond referendum. Of all the school board candidates, my personal vote on the bond referendum is gonna be a no. And there's a lot of emotion out there about that vote, and there's a no camp and a yes camp. But I'd like to ask you to remember that a vote in the voting booth is personal, and my vote reflects my personal view on how I do my finances. And so, you know, putting emotion aside, the current plan is more financially risky since this financial responsibility will fall to me because I live here. I don't have any intention, as many of the people I spoke to in the community that they plan to leave in a couple of years, I plan to stay. So there is concern about the $120 million being a large amount. There's concern in the community for the 1,000 apartments. That's part of the proposal that would be, that would sit on this land where we are now. And there's concern about how the revenue side is going to work out. So I'm concerned about those things too, the revenue side. I'm concerned about the 1,000 apartments. I'm concerned about executing a bond before we have revenue worked out. So my personal vote will be a no. But that doesn't mean that I'm against building a new school, that I'm against solving what we need to do here. I just would do it in a different order. I think we should get, make a bid for, a competitive bid for architects. I think we should put out an RFP. I don't want to weaken our position with developers by executing the bond, but I absolutely will work with all of these fine folks. And I don't have the fears that I've heard, like, oh no, if the bond doesn't pass. I have every bit of confidence that all of us will work together immediately and roll up our sleeves and build the facilities that we need to meet the needs of our students here in this district.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you. I'm going to address would be the upcoming bond referendum. I am 100% supportive of the bond referendum. I put the last three years of working, giving up of my time, leaving my job on a regular basis, committing with both the city, our, my colleagues on the school board, independent consultants. And we worked through 13 different options to how to get to this point. And ultimately, we got to this point because new construction was the best way to do it, and new construction was the best way to give us an opportunity to help bring down the cost of this, and that's in developing the 10 acres for commercial development. The number of things that get thrown around of the 1,000 apartments, we have not decided what will be set on this project right now, on this current site that you are, which would be the 10 acres. I took part in a meeting with the governor a few weeks ago. Some of the AP government students came out to that when Governor McCollum and folks were here for a transportation event. A couple of leaders from the city, as well as the school board, met with the government. A couple of leaders from the city, as well as the school board, met with Governor McAuliffe and folks from the economic development folks. They have high hopes of what this site will do because of its location next to transportation. We need a new school, we've worked very hard, we've bought in community members to have a conversation. No one wants to push anyone outside of living in Falls Church because this is a great community that we've all made a choice to live in. We are working hard, there is no option that is not going to have some risk. Everything in life has risk. You manage those risks, and I think we've done a good job of it to this point to manage those risks. And we will continue to do that if this referendum passes. And we, the students and the faculty here, deserve a brand-new high school to learn from yesterday.
So, I guess I will take a page from Richard's book and try to touch on two real quickly. For me, the question of how, who we would seek advice and input from is really an interesting one. To me, the role of a school board member and the role of any public servant is not to represent their own viewpoint only, it's to represent the viewpoints of the people that they serve. And so, I think the first thing is, I'll talk to anybody, honestly. We've been going around door-to-door, all of us have talked to lots of people around the city, and heard lots of different viewpoints. I've made a point of talking with folks who are part of that loud group that Richard talked about, about the folks who are not necessarily in favor of the referendum, who have questions, to understand their perspective, even though it's not my personal perspective, it's theirs, and we need to know, and we need to understand it. So, I would talk to anybody in that respect. But in some specifics, I think it's very important that we do have student representatives on the board, representative on the board, and on our committees that advise us as board members. I think that's crucial. I think we need to be talking with the superintendent and his senior staff, and we also need to talk to the teachers and the staff. And we need to have ways of doing that that are both informal and formal. And one of the ways that's worked in the past that I've seen is for teachers and staff and students to come to work sessions, which is the place where the board actually does sorts of lots of detailed conversations about things. It's not quite as formal a ritual as an actual board meeting is. So, having that conversation is a good place for that to happen. And we have lots of good advisory committees out there to help us understand specific topics that need to be getting ourselves input into the system. Another thing that some of the members have used is what they call office hours, trying to go and have more informal meetings with folks. And that's an innovation that I think is useful to approach. Another innovation that I would support is a little bit more direct contact on a regular basis from board and the city council, perhaps by having members go to, on a rotating basis, the other group's meetings every time, not just when there's a specific item of interest. Anyway, thanks.
Ms. Russell?
So, I'm also going to talk about the bond referendum, just because I think it is one of the most critical issues that are facing our community right now. And I truly and deeply believe that the bond referendum is pivotal to our school's continued success. As a community, we were founded and have always prided ourselves on our public education. And so, if we, if the bond referendum fails, I think we're going to have to really take a big step back and really ask ourselves, what is it that we believe in and what are our values as a community? Currently, this facility is not appropriate for 21st century learning, but more importantly, or as important, it's not appropriate for the school population. I think that for those who are the freshmen this year, you're aware of the fact that you are the largest freshman class in the history of Door 20th High School. Congratulations on that. But unfortunately, that will be short-lived because next year's freshman class will be even larger than yours, and so on and so forth. So, it's very critical that we have enough space. And finally, I think that one of the critical reasons that we need the referendum is not just the new school for the sake of having a new school, but one of the things that the superintendent and the committee have envisioned is truly to have a community school and have it something that would be accessible, obviously not during school hours, to the community in terms of the use. Right now, the layout of the school isn't very conducive to having outside groups use it. I know that there's a lot of people who don't have children in the schools who'd like to use it for meetings and things like that. So, I think that it's important that we truly have a community school since the schools are the core of our community.
That concludes round two. We're now going to move into round three. So, we've collected several questions from the audience, and we've selected one question for each candidate. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question addressed today.
Great. So, our first question is for Mr. Crispin. So, our students are great, but in what ways do you want to see our student body improve?
I'm sorry, can you repeat this one? Our students are great, what ways can they improve? Was that the last question?
Yep. In what ways could they improve?
That's a great question. I think that you guys are great, first of all. Give yourselves a round of applause for being. You're amazing because you're here, that's part of the reason I know why you're amazing, because you've shown up today to participate in this live civics class. You're also amazing because you have continued to tough it out in this freezing room that we're in right now. I brought my extra vest here just to try to insulate myself against the cold. I think the thing that where we could improve, where really our entire city could improve, is in how we look after those who are in the most need. And to help really support those around us who perhaps are underserved by our schools and who are in need of additional educational resources, so that we can support each other on a peer basis. We can't always rely on the school to do everything, on the administrators and the teachers to do everything. We need to support one another and bring each other up. Because our goal should not be to have everyone perform to the average, our job should be to try to raise the average so that we can all perform better together. And I do believe, I think that's Dr. Noonan's catchphrase, "Better together." And I do really believe that for our students, as well as for the system as a whole. And I would just love to see you guys continue to raise your aspirations and hopefully have a system that can support you in achieving those aspirations. So, thank you.
Our next question is for Mr. Webb. How do you feel about the King's Dominion Law? Would it be possible to start school before Labor Day?
Thank you for that question. That is a, that is a challenging one to do. It's something that we as a community have to look at and have a conversation with the community and see what, how we feel. I've had different folks on both sides of the issue talk about whether to not, whether to start or not start school prior to Labor Day. One of the things I'm going to do is pay attention to my colleagues in Fairfax, who this year, it was their first year of starting prior to Labor Day, and see how it has worked for them before making that move and having that conversation. But I will say that I have nieces and nephews in the southern part of the state who school start in mid-August, so I don't think we'll go that far in advance of looking at it. But what's potentially starting at it and looking at it as a possibility, because I will say on both sides of it, yes, you're going to start a little potential earlier, but it also in the back end gets you out of school a little bit early, so it has its pros and cons for, for both ways. But we have to make sure that we get the number of instruction days in and that, make those adjustments. But it's something I'm open to discussing and hearing from you, the students, and the teachers, who will be directly impacted by that before any decision is going to be made of whether to make that move or not.
Our next audience question is for Ms. Litten. So, if the bond referendum passes, are you worried people of Foster City would leave because taxes are too high?
I mean, it's certainly the thing we really will have to balance. I mean, there's a concern that people who don't have kids in the system will feel, if the taxes become significantly higher, that it's not worth it to live here. What we really need are those people to stay, because when your, when your kids are in school, the taxes you pay really isn't covering the cost to the system, because you guys actually, it costs a fair amount to educate you. When you don't have kids in the system, you're probably paying more in taxes than you're actually getting out. I mean, generally, people are willing to do that, so that's part of sort of our social compact, you know? We get advantage, we have the advantage when our kid's in school, we continue to pay taxes. But if they are raised so high that it's worth it just to move a mile away in Fairfax, people may begin to do that. So, it's going to be a balancing act to make sure we continue to provide city services for people who don't have kids, but also try and balance that with our schools' needs.
Our next question is for Mr. Anderson. What specific plans for fixing and/or replacing the school do you have?
So, I said before in my answer to the referendum, that the first thing that would happen if the bond referendum passes is the schools, on the school side, the school board and all of our advisory groups would sit down and start a 14-month process to figure out what that school ought to be. I've been involved with visioning sessions on that idea since they started a few years ago. We've been in the cafeterium over at MEH multiple times, we've been in other venues, to sit down and talk about what this ought to look like, what should the school be? So, we've got to, we've got to do that process, we've got to get our designs in place to make sure that it provides the services that we need for our students and the right size. For me, that's, it's a community process, you have to have that discussion. Some specific things that I think we need to make sure we have in a, in a school that serves the 21st century, we need a school that's energy efficient, we need a school that's designed to give us an environment that we can, that we can sit in and enjoy natural light and enjoy a, we know that there are learning outcomes that are real positive from that sort of environment. We need to have classes, being able to meet in spaces that support them through the right sorts of instructional tools, whether that's technology, whether that's people sitting around in group classes, whether that's folks being able to find alcoves tucked away to sit and have group conversations, or online classes, we need all of those sorts of things. So, for me, it's, it's trying to make sure that we have all of those needs supported. And some of the other, some of the other activities that are there that I know folks have an interest in from those visionary visioning sessions, should the new school have the ability to have a pool, should it have an auditorium bigger than this one, perhaps that can support community play, this can be used for a resource for the, for the community as a whole. These are all things that I think we need to make sure we are really considering carefully in that design process. So, my specific answer is, it's a 14-month design process, and that's what we're really going to have to spend a lot of time.
So, our next audience question is for Ms. Kujma. So, how important are small class sizes?
Well, I think the research shows that small class sizes are the most important in our younger grades. So, as I sat in budget work sessions over the years, I find it interesting, the discussion is when it comes up on class sizes, and we talk about averages. And I'm looking at the elementary school, and you have one teacher, and it's different because the students don't rotate. So, you have one teacher, and they're with the same group of kids. And I think it's extremely difficult on the elementary school level when those classes get bigger. So, my, my priority as a board member would be to try to keep the smaller grades smaller. And one of the things I found interesting was when we talked about class sizes at the, at the budget work sessions, they didn't talk about the high school. And you know, the answer was always, you know, the high school's really different. Well, it is different. And, and that's where we can get creative, because as we move into the future, you know, there's online learning. And, and so, how do you have online learning with a class size? Because actually, you're the classic one. And there is, there's a lot of online opportunities, and there's a thing out there called master classes, and they cost $99, and you get to take a video class with the person who is the best in the world in that industry. If you want to take a music class with Hans Zimmer, you can do that for $99. So, I think as we move into the future, the online opportunities really opens up a doorway to having really small class sizes, even at the high school.
Our last audience question is for Ms. Russell. Besides this old building we're in, what do you think is the biggest problem with our school system?
I'm not sure if I'd really categorize it as a problem, but it is a concern that I have. And that is the critical nature of attracting and retaining our teachers. I read a study recently, and it was the typical company, so if you want to refer to FCSPS, the company will spend approximately $5,000 to hire a single employee. And that's from start to finish in terms of the research that involved, the man-hours that involved, the energy, interviews, and so on and so forth. But the typical training budget for the average employee is only $2,000. And to me, I would want to make sure that we are giving our teachers the professional development that they need and deserve, because I've heard that that's one of the things that our teachers are craving and something that gives them job satisfaction, other than obviously teaching all you wonderful children as well. So, teachers, retention and attracting them, that would be one of the critical things. I hate it when we lose good teachers. Not only is it a financial drain on the system, but the children and the parents in the system are also the losers too. So, I think it's critical that we can keep our teachers and also find some new great ones.[1795.33]